To me, I hereby declare this meeting with Concha Hocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. The first item on the agenda this evening is land use matters, public hearings and ordinances. Allison Lee, are you here? Could you come up, please? Allison Lee is our Borough Zoning Officer, and she's going to introduce our applicant, waiver of off-street parking.
Yes. All right. So, on, good evening, everyone. On October 18th, 2022, the Borough received a use and occupancy application and a parking waiver request from the applicant Dominic Zini for the property located at 319 Forest Street. The applicant is interested in opening a 1,600-square-foot dance studio named Natalia's Muth Dance Studio on the first floor of the existing mixed-use building. Currently, there is a party and events planning business named Exceptional Events on the premises, as well as two apartments on the second floor. The property is located within the B.C. Borough Commercial Zoning District. Per Section 27-130211 of the Borough Zoning Code, a dance studio is permitted use within the zoning district. The applicant is seeking a waiver for the off-street parking requirements under Section 27-1307(c) of the Borough Zoning Code. And per Section 27, 2002, the required off-street parking requirement would be one space per five students and one space per 300 square feet of gross floor area for non-student patrons.
Thank you. So, Dominic, I do, if you could come up, yeah. I believe I remember reading, Dominic, that your hours are pretty limited. Could you go over them for us?
So, we're gonna run like two groupings of hours. The first grouping would be between 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and then a later evening grouping from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Okay. And how many, that grouping, how many does that consist of, or your goal is?
Our goal, five to 10. Five to 10 students would be more than happy.
Okay.
Are they generally adult students, young students, that would be dropped off rather than finding parking?
It's usually younger. The bigger group would be like young children to like teens. And then we do, we probably would also have adult classes. We're thinking in Concha Hocken, we're probably gonna be busier with the younger group, just with all the families and all the growth in Concha Hocken.
What's that with dance?
Oh, I'll take that. So, I'll be doing contemporary, lyrical, jazz, ballet, possibly like a heels class and creative movement for younger kids, so.
Where are you doing that now?
Oh, so I teach at a different studio right now, so, yeah.
Did anyone else have any questions?
Do you anticipate like any of your adult students to be in walking distance?
Absolutely. Yes, yeah.
No one else? No more questions for you guys. Thank you for coming in and welcome to Concha Hocken.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. The next item on the agenda under Council Business is conducting interviews for boards and commissions. We will have one interview this evening. If Liz McNeil could come up, anywhere you're comfortable, Liz, either place. And Liz is interviewing this evening for reappointment on the Planning Commission.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for coming in, Liz. Thank you for volunteering your services. We truly appreciate it, so. Does anyone have any questions for Liz?
Are you having fun?
Yeah, I was talking to Mike before. I feel like a lot has changed over the time that I've been on, so I started in 2016, and so I feel like we've seen, we've seen Concha Hocken through some major projects and then also kind of this lull that we've kind of got right now, there's not too much going through, so, yeah, I am having fun. Good, good group to be with.
Like, are you finding that when contractors come in, they still don't have all their information together?
No, I think they're more prepared than they have been in the past. I think that it's definitely a better flow. They're more prepared. I think we, as a, as a commissioner, are also better prepared. I feel like everyone's, I mean, Brittany, I'm sure can attest to like the Dropbox tantrums, but we seem to have resolved those and people are able to get to the files, access them easily, and have what they need to do the job.
Does anyone else have any questions for Liz?
Yes. Liz, what type of things would you like to see in the future come in front of the Planning Commission?
I think, I mean, obviously, I think things that align with our comprehensive plan. I know that that's something that a lot of the members, including myself, are referencing often, so that's still, I think, a big, big thing. I would love to see, maybe when the next comprehensive plan is done, that there's some sort of like workshop or something where we're like really reviewing it together, because I think sometimes people's perspectives and interests take over rather than like what's actually on that plan and what is truly driving it. But I don't know that there's any particular project. I mean, as a resident, I love that project. Like, that's fantastic, like a dance studio, that would be great. We don't have something like that. Childcare always is a big one. I'm sure you guys hear that from constituents all the time.
Actually, you're the first one that has said that.
Oh, really? Yeah, I feel like childcare is a big one. I mean, I think that we've have, I am always seeing people ask for, do you know where there's a space? Is there a space here? I'm on the waitlist forever. I feel like that's still something of a, that could service the community. After, same thing with after-school programs. I feel like people are scrambling to get that coverage after school.
Right.
Especially with the Fellowship House not doing their, they don't have to do their program anymore, right? Didn't they cancel that?
I don't believe we don't do the after-school program.
Yeah, now they're all with Wonder Spring, I think.
It was.
It's all because of the other stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I would love to see those projects, but I don't get control over.
But it's a good thought.
Yeah.
It's good to put out there for the, you know, Republican people interested in coming into Concha Hocken and starting businesses.
Yeah, and I think I'm really proud of like the, the parking changes that have happened over the last couple of years. I mean, we used to say like, you know, what is it, parking would always be the thing, like parking, parking, and now it's like, if you can walk three blocks, we're in a good space. Like, that's a, that's acceptable. I think we've, as a community, have gotten there, too.
Yeah, it is. Parking is great now. It makes it so much easier for everyone.
Yeah.
It really does. Does anyone else have any questions?
What kind of information can you give to folks who are thinking that they want to get involved in the community and, you know, what kind of work effort is it to be involved? Just to try and, you know, for us to get more people involved. So, you, as being part of a committee, what would you say to try and?
Yeah, honestly, that's one thing I thought about even when I got the reapplication. I was like, is this something that I should still be doing? Like, is it good for the community for me to keep doing something for 12 years, you know? And it's like, I don't know, here and there, but I know that it is sometimes a struggle when someone leaves to fill those vacancies. It is not a tremendous time commitment. I would say on big projects or when we have lots of agenda items, it's probably two hours of prep, but there have been, what, I think our last two meetings, I think we only had like one project, and our next meeting is canceled. So, I mean, if there are no projects, there's not really much coming across the table, so I don't feel like it's a tremendous impact on my time. I did really like in the beginning of our sessions when we, or right when I started, I did that Montgomery Planning Courses, and those were very helpful, so I would, those were a bit time-consuming in the beginning, but I would highly recommend them. I think that that's a really good starting point, and it helped me to be able to ask better questions and get better responses from our contractors and our presentations.
Thanks.
But not, it's definitely not a big commitment.
Can you put that on megaphone, Liz?
Yeah. It's not a big deal. Join us.
Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
For coming in, and thank you for your dedication to the.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Happy to do it.
You're welcome.
Take care.
The next item is under Presentations. There are two presentations. They are no-vote items for Council Information. The first one is Justin Claffey and Dominic Rocco are going to grab a presentation for the EAC on composting.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much for taking the time. I am Justin Claffey with the Concha Hocken EAC, otherwise known as Green Conchi. Oh, got it.
You're fine.
All right. So, yeah, this is another initiative, so we're continuing to kind of, as we, you know, rebuild post-pandemic and whatnot, get our initiatives in line. This one is regarding composting. All right, so composting and conchi, so I'm gonna start with just kind of an overview for anyone who doesn't, you know, really know the details of composting. It'll be pretty high-level stuff. So, first off, composting is the combining of organic waste at correct ratios that can be reused in lieu of topsoil and chemical fertilizers. And in this chart here, it kind of shows the life cycle of composting and that cradle-to-cradle relationship. So, we'll start with an apple, just as a small example. Most people eat it, do not finish the cord, throw that in the trash, that ends up in the landfill in a composting life cycle that goes to a compost bin, so similar to your recycling bin, it would go to the compost bin, but the, then decompose with other organic matter and food waste and other things. You can use that, mix it with your topsoil, it acts as that fertilizer, feeds the plants and things like that, so you grow another apple tree, you have an apple again, and the cycle goes on and on. So, that's really the super-high-level view of what composting is. The problems that we see currently with how we do things in the current condition is problem number one, organic waste that can be reused for crops, soil remediation, et cetera, is being used to fill trash cans and in turn landfills and incinerators. Problem number two being organic waste that ends up in landfills, then breaks down and puts off methane, which is a greenhouse gas, and I'll get into detail of that process and why composting is different than that in a second here. So, here we have a chart from the EPA's website, from the Institute for Local Self-Reliance that shows that it is estimated that approximately 50% maybe more that ends up in the landfills in the United States is compostable. And most people think of compost as just food waste, food scraps, things like that, and you can see in this chart, 21% of that is food scraps and whatnot, and there are other things that are compostable. 15% here, paper and paperboard. Concha Hocken specific, we do not recycle our pizza boxes because of the grease, that's compostable. We can cut that up, put it in our compost bin, that can be a compostable material, as can paper towels and other paper and paperboard materials. And then another 8% is yard trimmings. I personally mulch it and keep it in my yard, but that's just me. And then 8 other percent is wood waste, so you can see there's multiple organic materials that we're talking about here. So, next up, the benefits of composting. So, benefit number one, less items in trash cans weekly and therefore less in the landfills, also reduces transportation emissions of getting it to the landfills. Benefit number two, compost reduces and in some cases eliminates the need for chemical fertilizer, because that is the point of chemical fertilizer, to feed the plants. In this case, the compost takes that role. Benefit number three, composting lowers emissions by improving carbon sequestration in the soil and by preventing methane emissions through aerobic decomposition, as methane-producing microbes are not active in the presence of oxygen. That's a lot. I will break that down for you. So, one, carbon sequestration is carbon storage. The best example of that is a tree. So, a tree takes carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere, it produces oxygen, it stores that carbon in its wood, that is the fiber of the wood. So, that's the best, easiest example of carbon sequestration. Compost does the same thing in soil. And then as far as the aerobic decomposition, so that's going back to the landfills. Aerobic decomposition is the decomposition of organic materials with the presence of oxygen. It does not put off methane because there are not methane-producing microbes involved. An aerobic digestion is what produces the methane, and that is a lack of oxygen. That's what you get in a landfill. As you put it underground, it does not have oxygen, that's what creates that methane. That is why the emissions are so different with composting compared to putting those organic materials in a landfill. Further benefits, benefit number four, compost promotes higher yields of agricultural crops as it replaces chemical fertilizers. Benefit number five, compost can help aid reforestation, wetlands, restoration, habitat, revitalization efforts by improving contaminated, compacted, and marginal soils. That, in English, is the microbes that are produced from the compost pile that go into the topsoil continue to work, so it breaks down the hazardous materials and things that are in the soil. So, if you have a brown field or things like that, you put compost in there, it helps break down those hazardous materials. And last benefit, compost enhances water retention in soils and provides carbon sequestration. I talked about the sequestration, but the water retention is big to me and Dom specifically. We love our stormwater management, but essentially what that means is it holds water better than your average soil. Erosion has helped, things like that, and us being a river town, that's a great thing as we want as little water making into the river as possible so that we prevent flooding. Now, that is the high-level stuff, composting in Concha Hocken, how it can help or affect our town. Composting in Concha Hocken can reduce waste, trash waste by up to that 50% that we talked about, and with us moving to a one-day trash pickup, that eliminates a ton. People would, you know, complain less about having one trash day pickup. And then next up is how residents can do it today, and that is with a paid service or a do-it-yourself service. So, I currently use a paid service, and I'll break down how that looks for me. So, the compost provider gives me a five-gallon bucket, they pick that up on an electric bike every other week, tomorrow is my pickup day. If you need more containers, they can provide as many as you'd like, there's obviously a little fee that comes with that. The compost is taken to three local, so this is a local company that I work with, I think it's Montgomery County, Chester County, Bucks County, I think that's it for now, but they're a very small company at the moment. They have three compost locations, they take it to locally, and all of that compost is used for farms and other local locations. They do have two give-back days a year where I can get that compost back, I could use it in my yard, use it in my garden, things like that. So, that's kind of a quick overview of a paid composting service. DIY composting is purchasing your own bin, which you can get just about any marketplace these days, produce compost starter kit, or if you are a pro, you can just get topsoil from Home Depot, and that gets it going. You would get composting worms, which are those microbes that would help break it down, and that is your composting. You let it sit until you get what you want and you use it in your yard.
I have a question.
Yes.
Where do you get the worms?
You can buy them just like the plastic bins, so I know PetSmart has a bunch, but there's a ton of online websites that you can get, and they deliver them right to you.
Do you use the same worms that you would use for fishing?
I do not know the details of worms. Yeah, they call them composting worms, so I assume they're specific. Yeah. Last up here is the Lomi Composter, which is a, the pricey version, but probably the easiest, which is you can set this next to your air fryer, it's a quiet odorless, easy-to-use composting option, that literally you throw your food waste on the counter, it grinds it up and breaks it down over time, and you have compost right there. So, that is kind of the last option there. Sources, so that no one yells at me. And then lastly, any questions?
I had my question. Does anyone in Council have a question?
So, you, I, thank you. That was a great presentation.
Thank you.
I'm hoping that you can provide a little context with this, because you also have a family.
Yes.
And you're family compost, so it's not just you. Can you tell us a little bit more about things that you're able to put in your compost?
Absolutely. So, I have a almost-two-year-old who loves to waste her food, and with that, we were interested in composting, but we got this bin. I didn't know this was an option until semi-recently, and I believe I probably eliminate one or two trash bags a week from going in my trash due to this. Mainly, it is the food waste and paper towels. Paper towels is a big one with, she likes to spill things also, likes to throw things around. But, yeah, it's crazy. The pizza boxes are another big one, and I end up shoving it all down pretty hardcore, so I'll try to go through what I throw in there. Egg crates, paper towels, pizza boxes, the food scraps, egg shells, which I know there's the debate, does it go down in the garbage disposal, does it not? You just throw it in the compost bin, that debate can end. Those are probably the big ones that I use, but, yeah, it eliminates a lot from our trash, and that's a family of three.
Can you use cereal boxes? So, what does it say, recycle?
I would have to look at my chart. I don't think so because of like the laminate and other, other things that are involved in that, but I, I could look. Most paper materials, it's more the cardboard, things like that that they can use, but possibly. And that's the other thing with the paid services, different paid services, depending on where they take their compost, we'll give you a list of what exactly can go. Not all of them are the same, so it's another thing to.
Justin, where do you keep your bin?
Backyard, next to the trash cans.
And that's in the winter, too?
Oh, yeah. The bin that you're provided is airtight, you don't smell anything, it's, it's very easy to use. After they come and grab it every other week, they suggest you clean it out, so I clean it, and it's, yeah, just another bin next to the recycling.
So, it has a cover, animals can't get into it?
Correct. Yeah, but I have not had any different rodents than the squirrels that like my tree in the backyard, and that's the important thing of the airtight. So, like if someone wanted to take a Home Depot five-gallon and just put a lid on it, I would not suggest that for that exact reason. So, yeah, the airtight's pretty important.
The galvanized trash can?
A what?
A galvanized trash can? With the handle that comes up and locks the lid in place?
As long as it's there, that would probably work. But then you just need whoever to pick it up, and if they want to handle the, that type of trash can. So, it would just be talk with the service.
So, and you're saying that you have to have a service?
No, you can do it yourself, and I know there are residents that do do it. They have the spinning barrel-type containers, they have the five-gallon buckets, there's a bunch of different containers you use, but no, you can, you can get containers and you can do it yourself in many different ways with, you know, a YouTube video and a container of some sort.
In your research, did you find if any other municipalities were doing this?
I know there are, the majority of the ones are much bigger cities, like I'd say 100,000 is like the smallest I know of, but there are public services that go on now. I don't know of any locally, I don't know if we've heard of any locally. It's like the one I'm thinking of is California, and they have their own compost storage location where public workers are the ones maintaining that pile, but, yeah, not, I don't know of anyone that does it locally as a municipality.
Thank you.
So, the company you're using is a local company, if they're coming on a bicycle, so.
Yes.
You're supporting local business, and they're able to service you every week?
Absolutely, or every other.
Every other week.
Every other week, and yes, and the compost locations that they have, I think one's in Montgomery County, one's in Bucks County, the third one might still be in Montgomery County as well, but also the farms that it goes out to and whatnot is all local, so everything is staying within the five counties, which is another thing that I like about it, which we'll probably dive into deeper in a second.
So, just a second question.
Yes.
For you and the experience you've had, may I ask why you choose to do a service versus the DIY?
Really, time. It saves a ton of time, it's, it's just another trash can. The way I'm doing it with the service, whereas, you know, it'd almost be like a gardening type of experience if I did DIY. You need to maintain it, you need to look over it, you need to make sure that first slide, the ratios matter, you need to make sure of all those things. The paid service just makes it easy, where I just put it in a bin, it goes.
Remember the whole aerobic, anaerobic conversation? You gotta turn it over all the time, or else it will get stinky, right? Because then you don't have oxygen on the bottom, it starts to break down, and then you start to get the stinky stuff. So, that's probably the reason why, because if you're not constantly kind of doing that, then that's kind of what you end up with, so it takes a commitment to do that.
So, approximately, what does a service like this cost?
$200 a year. Yeah, so I think you, I'm pretty crazy with my mind, I think it was $216 and change for the year. And again, that includes me getting compost back as well as the container, so it's a very, pretty easy. I think if you wanted, and there's a monthly fee as well, I think it's a little more expensive, you save a little by paying it upfront, I want to say it's like $20 or so a month, so that ends up being like the $240 or whatever. But, yeah, it's, it's not bad for what I get back, which is much less trash and feeling good about helping a local company, local farmers, you know, that type of thing.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any more questions?
Justin, that's the Back to Earth compost.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Justin, thank you for your presentation and all the time you put into it, it was very enlightening.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Now, you gotta listen to me.
Okay, Dominic.
Oh, I thought you were just his.
No, I'm not just his sidekick, no, no, no. Well, thank you for all your questions. I want to start off with that, because hopefully you found this to be educational, and that's one of the main things that we're trying to do, is educate people on environmental things, and just because we put out a flyer to people, it doesn't mean people read it. Matter of fact, it adds to the wastering, right? So, what we're trying to do is we're trying to educate people, and we want to make sure people are educated, and the best way to do that is do face-to-face, do workshops and things of that nature. So, I'm glad that you guys enjoyed your composting presentation, and we hope to do a lot more of this, and that is leading us to the next slide here. So, this is part two of what we talked about last month, and kind of planted the seed, pun intended, last month, to talk about what we propose for Earth Day, which, anyone want to answer? What that, it's on the screen.
Give me 20 seconds.
All right, it's on the screen. You guys see that? So, on Earth Day, this happens to fall on a Saturday, which is great for 2023, and so what we want to do is to put together a green fest here in Concha Hocken at the Fellowship House and for, at part of Marywood Park. There's going to be a number of different activities we want to put in there for environmental education, and it'll be things that'll be beneficial to both adults and to children, because one, one of the things we've learned is that when you bring the kids, they bring their parents, which is how everyone learned about recycling, believe it or not. So, you can see on the screen there, we want to encourage things like native plants. So, we were just talking before we got started here, how I had to bring in this palm because it was outside. My wife bought it at Home Depot because it was very pretty, but it's not native, so it's going to die if it stays outside, so we have to bring it inside, and so there's a lot of education people can really use from learning about native plants, where to get them, how much they cost, how to take care of them, and there's a lot of people here in the borough who can help with that. So, things like that. I don't want to go through all these different things, but it's going to be a community event, something that extends beyond the borders of Concha Hocken, so we really are excited about it. And again, I have to give credit to Ray, even though he's on his phone right now, but I have to give credit to Ray, because this was originally a seat he planted when he talked to us about, hey, why are you going to do these little workshops, you get two or three, okay, maybe five or six people show up, and then rather than do that, why don't you do something once a year, have a combination of things, and then you can kind of hit a lot more population, and it'll attract a lot more people. So, that's exactly what we're doing. And so, this is our official request to you, and I think you guys have to vote on it, I don't know if that's to be today, it'd be great if you could vote today, but I guess I have to do that, I have to officially make that, I don't know, put that out there for you all.
We understand that.
I don't know what my next slide says, let me see what it says there. Oh, yeah, so here's just in case you were wondering, a fuller list of what those different topics are that we were planning. I'm not sure if we're going to touch on all. I'm not sure if we're going to touch on all of these, but for instance, um anybody remember the Harry Potter festival they used to have in Chestnut Hill? Do you remember that? So I remember they had a uh tent set up where you, they let you just um go on an e-bike and ride it up and down the hill. And it was like the most amazing thing ever. This is a little while ago. Which we know we have hills in Conshohocken and it was effortless going up and down the hill. So there's a variety of things that that I think will be interesting to people, whether they're electronic vehicles, excuse me, electric vehicles. Electric bikes, scooters, things of that nature. Um one of the other things we thought would be worthwhile to do is to uh incorporate an e-waste collection event that day. Um so that's something, of course, we'd have to coordinate with the borough because that'll attract people to come as well. And then in the process, we educate people about e-waste. Maybe there's people who want some of these materials so they don't make it into the waste stream, things like that. So anyway, you can see the list on there. And uh one of the taglines that, you know, we think will be kind of catchy is, are you environmentally conchy? We're going to put that on T-shirts maybe, who knows? All right, so that was it. So I'm going to put it out there for any questions.
I think it's a wonderful idea. I and I I like the whole concept of it and I really hope that it is a a great event. And it does end up being an annual event for Conshohocken. And I think it's a good way to try and get to all of the residents because I know that is the most difficult part, is getting the word out. And I I think this is a great idea to do it. So.
We'll bring sprout out. So.
I'm going to move a little bit off the agenda because the approval, the consideration to approve the event is on your agenda under manager matters. But since Justin and Dominic are standing up here, it probably is prudent that we just consider approving the event.
Okay.
Dominic and the EAC have submitted their um park permit, the community center permit. They've provided all necessary documentation. It's been reviewed by staff. So what would be on for this evening um would be consider is consideration to approve the event on Saturday, April twenty-second. Um waive all fees um and then just be make it contingent upon final administrative review as we get closer to the date.
I will, I, the motion is to approve a special event request for the EAC Green Fest event on Saturday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. And waive all borough fees as applicable contingent upon final administration review and approval of the event details. Do you have a second? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And that note, does anyone else have any questions for Dominic?
No. Thank you very much for that presentation.
I'll be around for a little while. I'll be the next question.
All right. Thank you, Dominic. The next item on the agenda is the Fayette Street Road Diet presentation. If Brian Keating could come up, please. Oh, Brian Keating is up here.
Thank you. Um good evening, everyone. Um my goal here tonight is to uh present an update on one of the things that we've been evaluating, which is the Fayette Street um roadway reconfiguration, commonly known as a road diet. Uh this is one of the initiatives that we've um that the borough has undertaken uh in order to continue to focus on traffic and and pedestrian safety throughout the borough. Um so just to orient uh everyone, as you well know, uh Fayette Street uh in the southern end consists of five lanes uh between First Avenue and and Elm Street. Uh as we get north of Second Street, it really goes to four lanes, two lanes each direction. Uh there's a posted speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour throughout. One street parking exists on almost every block, I believe every block. Uh some of the desired improvements that we've heard um historically are uh concerns about traffic speed. Uh also concerns about uh pedestrian crossing and and trying to make that more comfortable uh and safer. So one of the um commonly used initiatives is this road diet configuration. What I mean when I say road diet is uh that's the term used by Federal Highway Administration for this uh measure, which effectively takes uh four lane roads and converts them to three lane roads. The the impact is that instead of having two through lanes in each direction, it will reduce the traffic to one through lane in each direction. And then use that excess space to create a a center left turn lane, which can also be used as a median area in certain areas. Uh and then it provides usually buffer space uh on the outside of the the through lanes. So in the case of Fayette Street, uh and first of all, I should say, we do not think this is feasible really in the First Avenue or Elm Street um area. There's just absolutely too much traffic uh coming in from the side streets. But when we look at 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 the the configuration of Fayette Street from from really second or third to the north, um the average daily traffic uh on Fayette Street does fall within the the parameters of of a successful road diet configuration. So um in in looking at Fayette Street specifically, you know, that the the buffer space that could be created would would basically leave room between the travel lane and car doors opening and closing. Uh the typical benefits are uh it reduces the average travel speed uh on through on Fayette Street itself, on the through lanes. Uh it creates a more uniform travel speed. So right now, when we have four lanes, you may have some slower traffic in the right lane and some faster traffic at the left turn, left lane. Um having a single through lane and compressing that traffic really uh reduces the highs and lows of the the travel speed and and makes it more uniform. Um the big the big benefit uh is improved safety for vehicular traffic. So this configuration has been shown nationally to reduce crashes anywhere from from nineteen to forty-seven percent. Center, the center left turn lane by itself typically reduces rear end and left turn crashes because it gets that left turning traffic out of the first, out of the stream of the moving traffic. Um in addition, there's fewer conflict points along the roadway as traffic crossing really only has to look for one lane in each direction. Similarly, for pedestrians, uh it reduces the number of conflict points. And um with the reduced width of the actual travelway, it's it's effectively a shorter crosswalk for pedestrians. And when they're crossing, they really, instead of have to having to focus on uh two two cars coming in each direction, it's really just one car in each direction. And this is a graphic that shows um one of the other common benefits. Um as as you know, if you've driven on Fayette Street and attempted to make a left turn on any one of the avenues, uh if there's two lanes of traffic uh coming at you, um certainly a car in the lane closest to you could block your view of a car that's traveling a little bit behind it in the other lane. And when you go to make your left turn, um that that car appears out of out of nowhere effectively. So if we've been a three lane configuration, we've eliminated that condition. And a car that's now sitting in that center turn lane uh really has only one conflict to view, which is a single lane of opposing traffic. So the amount of left turn crashes that would that would occur uh are dramatically reduced. Um just to to give you an idea of, this is this is the overhead configuration or the aerial view of of Fayette Street in the Fourth and Fifth Avenue areas. Uh you can see that the two lanes in each direction I described, the on-street parking. Um and the um the length of the crosswalks uh at each of the intersections. And if we look at an alternate configuration of the road diet, you can see that it would center uh the left turn lane as described. It would leave some areas for um mediums that could be put in if desired, some aesthetically, um some aesthetic improvements. Uh it would result in one lane each direction. As you can see, the the buffer area would give about five feet of space between parked cars and the and the traveling or the traveling vehicles on Fayette Street. So as with every, as everything has pros and cons. So when we, what we spent uh some time on is looking at how the the road diet obviously has some pros with respect to safety. But the cons are how it will impact traffic flow. So a lot of the the common um concerns are that uh the road diet compressing traffic from two lanes in each direction into one lane will obviously create congestion or or worse than the existing congestion. There'll be increased difficulty making left turns or crossing movements from the side streets because, which is logical because as the traffic is compressed into one lane, uh the traffic's going to be closer together. So there's going to be less gaps uh to make that left turn or make that through movement. Um and the biggest one that we we typically hear is diversion to parallel roadways. So folks that would use Fayette Street, uh certainly if if there's enough congestion, would they, you know, divert and travel down the side streets, which we don't want uh through the residential areas. So when we looked at uh specifically the volumes on Fayette Street, and and what I would note is that we did factor in um all the pending land developments uh that have been approved on the riverfront or not yet fully occupied. So we did look at uh that traffic and we also compared it to, uh we we did new counts um recently and compared it to pre-COVID counts back from twenty nineteen. And we used the actually the twenty nineteen counts, which were higher. So we believe our models are fairly conservative um as far as having um, you know, a worst case uh volume scenario from peak hour perspective. Uh and how I would characterize it, we we evaluated basically fifteen intersections, six of which have traffic signals, nine of which uh don't. Uh and looked at uh things like level of service, which is the average delay at each intersection. We looked at uh vehicular queuing, both on uh the main approaches of Fayette Street and the side streets. Uh we looked at um and we looked at travel time too, which is another good indicator of the north to south. So just to to characterize um how the road diet would operate if if implemented, um the uh average delay probably on the side street is the biggest impact. So left turning cars and cars that would cross Fayette Street are going to have the most negative impact. So that could be anywhere from, when we look at at different intersections, it could anywhere be from twenty to forty more seconds of waiting on the side street to for a gap to make a left turn or go across. Um that means that on average, we have queues of about maybe two or three vehicles at most intersections during peak hour. That could go to four to six vehicles. Um but what we think would mostly happen is most of those cars that are making a left turn. When we look at the volumes, the left turns are very low anyway because it's difficult to make a left turn in today's condition. We think that that those traffic, you know, we don't foresee a lot of traffic diverting from Fayette Street to the side streets. What we do see is in in those local blocks, if normally you would come out at an unsignalized intersection and attempt to make a left or through, you would probably take the extra time to go to the nearest traffic signal, which is either two or three blocks away. So we do think that that would happen. Uh but when we look at the actual flow on on Fayette Street, uh we're looking at a a reduction in average travel speed of anywhere from from six to eight miles per hour on a segment by segment basis. But the travel time itself is not tremendously impacted. So uh for example, in the um, we looked at both northbound and southbound. And in looking at the northbound um in the after, in the afternoon peak, uh we're effectively, over the course of four minutes, only adding about twenty seconds to the travel time by going from the two lanes to one lanes. And in the southbound direction, what's a bigger impact, we're adding about forty seconds um to go from effectively the northern part of the borough down to First Avenue. So there are certainly some negative impacts. Um but um in the in the grand scheme of how those uh delays and level of service compared to other busy intersections, you know, in the surrounding in areas, um they're not unusually unusually bad from that standpoint. I guess is the way I would characterize it. So uh the next steps is is if this is a configuration that is of interest to the borough to pursue. Um we would recommend likely coordinating with PennDOT to see what they think of the results. Uh as you know, Fayette Street's obviously a state highway. Uh they would have to buy into the to the concept. Um and then we would look at other, you know, implementation issues like the identification of uh funding. Um and then it would move to design and implementation. So from our um, our exercise at this point was simply determining if it's really, you know, how bad it would be to implement it from a traffic standpoint. Um and while there are certainly some um, you know, some negative impacts, I would care, I I would say that the, you know, concept is feasible, at least for further consideration.
Brian, in your evaluation, did you factor in the smart light system that we have implemented?
We did.
Perspective of moving the traffic when it's heaviest and those kinds of things?
We did. So um when we when we model it during peak hour traffic, it does account, it does account for those fluctuations in the side street traffic. Uh when we look at how the the green time effectively is allocated at each signalized intersection. So that is, that is included in the model.
And then, you know, a question would be, when did you look at it? During COVID or are you looking at it post-COVID or pre-COVID amounts of traffic?
So we looked at, we looked at the pre-COVID amounts of traffic. And when I compared the pre-COVID amounts of traffic to uh traffic that we counted probably this time last year, October of twenty-one, the pre-COVID traffic is anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent higher. So I guess what I'm saying is in October of twenty twenty-one, looking at the intersection of of Fayette and Elm, for example, in October twenty twenty-one, that intersection was fifteen to twenty percent below what it was in uh twenty nineteen.
And Brian, do you expect that even without the development for that traffic to increase now?
Well, I think what what by using the pre-COVID number, you know, that number was effectively what I would call a normal condition.
Right.
So I think it's conservatively high. And then we added all the pending land development that hasn't been occupied yet to that to that traffic. So our model is looking at, and then we projected it two years in the future with a with a background growth factor. So, you know, we've we've done a couple of steps to look at what we think is a conservatively high traffic volume.
Does it change timing if you started it on Second Avenue or Third Avenue or Fourth Avenue? Does that change anything from uh Forty Second to?
It would make it a little bit less, sure. So if it was, um, you know, depending on on, you know, if it's pursued and depending on where the where the part, where it starts, you know, you would see that um the travel time increase really in that section where it goes to the the one lane. Because that's what we compared it to, was the four lane section. So to compare apples to apples, we, you know, we looked at what's the travel time of if it stayed four lanes? And then what would be the travel time if it went through a three lane section? So.
And to keep the congestion down, do you think it would be feasible for us to do a block the box like they did in West Conshohocken? So that people aren't trying to get in through a red light? Holding up the traffic that's flowing?
So you're saying if, yeah, well, in in that situation, those intersections are much closer together than what we have here on Fayette Street. But so I don't, I don't, our our model's not showing that we're going to have a queue extend from one intersection through another intersection. So any any stacking of traffic on Fayette Street is showing to be accommodated within those blocks between signalized intersections. Now, if it if it did become an issue, uh do not block the box. Marking and signage is feasible. Again, it would have to be, everything I'd say, it'd have to be approved by PennDOT, but our experiences would be allowed.
And the lanes that are the five feet, could they become bike lanes or are they not wide enough yet?
They, they are wide enough. Five feet is typically the minimum to to formally establish a bike lane. However, being next, right next to um parked cars is typically, and I would say, not desirable. So it could be, it it's something that could be further looked at. Um but I know that there's been, where there are bike lanes next to on-street parking, there's usually, you know, complaints associated with that, with car doors opening and things like that.
So um the speed limit on Fayette is twenty-five miles an hour. What is the statistic in the EAC mistress of what type, what speed would be expected to be what the best?
Well, it it's, it varies from segment to segment. I think that what I what I looked at overall is it's going, it would reduce the speed. So the model shows that your your four lane speed, average speed during um peak hours with the, under the existing condition is likely in that thirty-six to thirty-eight range. Um and with the three lane configuration, we get down to more of that twenty-eight to thirty range.
What are those numbers again? So thirty-eight miles an hour and then?
That we get down to that twenty-eight to thirty with the with the road diet. Now, I'll caution you, this is, we're modeling traffic. So those aren't exact measurements that, you know, um that could be done. But we're, we're basically using caps. But we're basically using counts and some historical data to model what the differences are. And that's why I wouldn't take those numbers exactly. So we're looking at really kind of a range of what we would expect as an improvement.
So was there an estimation done of what we are seeing going on? Is Fayette considered a way that you monitor or?
So I've not done that, but it could be done. I mean, we could radar actual traffic and conduct a speed study.
So that's just the number one thing, that the impact it would have, like, not that it's actually real numbers?
That's, yeah, to characterize it, I think what we're saying is it would reduce the average speed by six to eight miles per hour.
Okay, okay.
So.
Thank you.
Sure.
Brian, where would you end this road diet as you're leaving the borough? Can you go down to North Lane? Would Plymouth and White Marsh cooperate with that?
I don't know the answer to that. I suspect they, you know, I think we could certainly discuss it with them because it is logical that it would go all the way to North Lane because Butler Pike is the same configuration.
Right, on the other side of North Lane.
The other side of North Lane, correct. So it, and actually, you know, up in that stretch, the side street volumes are relatively low. So it would definitely work, you know, north of 11th.
Brian, these have gone in around the county, these road diets, including in King of Prussia. Can you speak to, if they've been successful, have they managed to find a balance between traffic and safety?
Well, First Avenue is an example over in King of Prussia. I know there was a, I guess, you have to decide what your success metric is. But from the standpoint of the businesses at first being against it and then, you know, opening up the consideration of it and going in, you know, we've had very little complaints over there after it's been implemented. So I think folks get used to it. There has been a, I think my understanding is there's been, you know, an overall speed reduction over there. There has been some traffic calming impacts. That also had a mid-block pedestrian crossing, which also served to slow the speeds down in that area.
And Fayette is considered a state highway, is that right?
It is a state highway, yes.
So PennDOT doesn't want traffic to go slow? They want to move traffic through?
Well, they want it to be safe too. I mean, yeah. So that, and that's why I said, you know, PennDOT coordination's important. So we don't want to, you know, while the safety benefits are important, we don't want to outweigh, you know, if we create congestion, we're creating other safety issues. So they're looking, you know, they've been open to this configuration in the past decade or so from the standpoint of trying to balance those needs.
Thank you.
Brian, have you ever heard of any areas that went with the road diet and then had to back out of it because it just caused havoc?
I don't know of any, but it doesn't mean that there isn't any. I could certainly look, you know, research that. I've not looked into that.
Brian, you said it would reduce the amount of left-turn accidents on the road having the road diet. Do we have any statistics on, like, Concha Hocken on Fayette Street? How many left-hand turns accidents we have here?
So I have some statistics. Now, what I don't have is, I don't have an exact breakdown of whether the left turn was Fayette onto the side street or from the side street on the Fayette. But I can tell you that, because that accident's classified as an angle accident.
Okay.
So we know that actually makes up, you know, 38% of all the crashes that have happened on Fayette Street.
Okay, do we know how many crashes there have been on Fayette Street in like the last year?
I have a chunk of the last five years. I don't have, I could get it for you. I don't have it by year.
Okay.
So in the last, in the last five years, there's been 84 crashes on Fayette Street. According to the statistics I have.
Both the angled and the left turn combined?
Well, there are a number, there's a number of different classifications. So of the angle crashes, there's been 32 out of the 84. And then the other high classification is rear ends, which are commonly, when you're coming up on someone that stops to make a left turn quickly.
And or a right turn?
Or a right turn. There are some very slow right turns. And also, they have a classification, same-direction side swipe, which could be changing lanes or swiping into a parked car. So those are the top, those are the top three categories.
Does anyone else have any questions for Brian? Brian, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
It was very informative. We truly appreciate it. Thanks for all your hard work. The next item on the agenda is manager matters, and I will turn that over to Ms. Chekov.
Thank you, President Leonard. We have a financial security release for 212 Wood. It is a final financial security release in the amount of $41,665.05.
Thank you, Stephanie. So the motion we're seeking from council this evening is to approve the final financial security escrow release for 212 Wood Street in the amount of $41,665.05.
I'll make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is an amendment to the ASME union contract. There are two changes that are included in that and captured in the amendment. The first is that the lead worker position is currently a union position, and that position will be leaving the union collective bargaining agreement and becoming a non-union position with the title of Director of Public Works. And the next amendment in that, that is collected in this bargaining agreement is a $3-an-hour increase for employees that were hired after January 1st of 2014. It's important to note that the amendment provisions are all captured in the proposed budget that was presented to you earlier this evening. So this is not in addition to, this is already included in. And the union has approved the amendment.
That's great.
Yes. Again, for discussion this evening, it will be back on your agenda on the 16th for consideration to approve.
Does anybody have any questions for Stephanie on that? Thank you, Steph.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is legal matters. And I will just note for council that all of the legal matters that Mr. Peters is discussing this evening are all no votes until the next meeting.
Thank you, President Leonard.
You're welcome.
Five items that we're going to review together, but all of them you've looked at in one way, shape, or form previously. The first is a public park license agreement for the Santander parcel. We talked about this previously. This is an area between the parking area for that business and the church property. The license agreement as presented is for 10 years. There is a nominal fee of $100 for use of the space, $100 a month. There is an indemnity, there is indemnity language whereby the borough indemnifies the property owner, insurance language that has been approved by the borough's insurance company. And generally speaking, the borough takes on all of the maintenance responsibilities for, in exchange for, again, a relatively minor nominal fee. So I can take any questions on this agreement, or you can always provide me with feedback between now and the meeting where you vote on it. Anything on this one?
I don't believe anybody has any questions. Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Very good. The next one, very similar. A public pocket park and public parking license agreement for the Mason property. We also discussed this at length at several of your meetings, and you had a presentation that showed you what we hope this will look like. This one's a little different from Santander because it also includes a public parking aspect for the public parking lot, for the parking lot there, and also an aspect of the use of a messaging sign on that property with respect to the sign, the public pocket park area and the public parking area. Again, the borough assumes all maintenance responsibilities. The lodge is actually not charging us any fee for this agreement, so they've acknowledged that there's a joint benefit to the work that's being proposed. The lodge has exclusive use over the pocket park area and over the parking area. When they need it, they can request that from the borough. And generally speaking, the agreement allows them to use it, obviously for those uses, as long as it doesn't interfere with the agreement. And then they have an absolute right to use the parking area on their lodge meeting nights, which occur weekly. And again, it includes the same indemnity language as the Santander agreement and is designed so that the borough takes on the responsibility for these areas in exchange for, again, in this case, a no-fee license agreement. So with that, I can take any questions on this one, or you can always check in with me before the next meeting.
So if you say the lodge will be using it whenever there's, as they need it, does that mean that the public does not have?
So in those circumstances, so there's two things. There's the public parking area, which on, it's in the agreement. I think it's on Tuesday nights totally closed to the public, the parking area. And that's because the lodge needs further meetings. It's more than a reasonable request, so the parking area will be closed. On nights where the lodge is having an event and they would like to use the public pocket park space or use the parking area space exclusively, the agreement allows for that, provided that it doesn't interfere with the overall intent of the agreement, which is for it to be open to the public, acknowledging that this is their property and the borough is going to, within reason, allow them to use it exclusively. That is, so there will be circumstances where the pocket park area is closed to the public as well. And what the borough would just need to do is, in those circumstances, just make sure the messaging gets out there so there's no confusion.
Would there be signage there that night?
Probably.
It's the same if you want to put it into context of someone reserving a pavilion at a public park. It is public property. It is available and open to the public at all times, within park rules. If someone preserves a pavilion through our recreation department, they have a permit with some, that basically says it's being utilized for a private purpose for a period of time, and then sort of kind of the same concept.
Yep. So as long as it's signed and noticed appropriately, I don't expect there to be any major issues. And both, I mean, both of these licensors have been just really great to work with. I mean, it's, this is pretty neat what they're doing. So if anybody has any questions between now and the next meeting, just let me know. The next is another license agreement. This one is for the Borough Helipad. So as you know, you have an existing license with Fanatics for use of your helipad. That license needs to be renewed. So this is a proposal to renew that license. It clarifies the number of flights that are allowed, clarifies the definition of flights. It provides for a more specific and succinct operational procedure where the safety officer needs to be approved by the borough and is required to undergo borough training. The flight coordinator is also approved by the borough. And then I'll get to this in a second, but for other third parties that would use the helipad, the intent is for the same safety officer and the same flight coordinator to handle all flights coming in and out of the helipad, so there's no conflict or confusion. And then it does increase the license fee slightly under the agreement and sets forth the license for the next five years. And then after that, it moves into carryover language. So happy to answer any questions about this one, or you can always get to me between now and the next meeting.
And those requirements that are put in place for the extra safety precautions is not an expense that the borough is taking?
Yeah, great question, Tina. So it is a, all the expense for the safety officer and those additional safety features are covered by the license agreement. And the way that we've worked it out, and I'll get to this in a second, is if there are third parties, there's a cost-sharing provision, but it never comes back to the borough. Yep. And the last, or not the last, but the next agreement is with G.I. Aviation. This is a new license agreement, a new party that wishes to use the helipad. We had to draft this license so that it was consistent with the Fanatics license because the Fanatics do have basically a first, you know, a first right to use the helipad. So this agreement defers to the Fanatics agreement. They have to use the same safety protocol. They have to use the same safety officer, the same flight coordinator. Fanatics flights take priority over their flights. The goal being, of course, that there are no conflicts because they're using the same flight coordinator. And then there's a cost-sharing for the safety officer and flight coordinator and the same license fee under this license. So again, any questions between now and your next meeting, just let me know. And the last item is the second amendment to the lease agreement with Washington Fire Company. This second amendment would extend the lease through December 2024. We also tightened up the language with respect to what our lease premises actually are. So we have a diagram that's getting attached to the lease. And there is clear clarity over the areas that the borough has both a right and responsibility over. And again, that would extend it out to December 2024 and otherwise leaves the agreement in place, aside from clarifying the lease premises. So I can answer any questions you may have, or you can get to me before the next meeting.
Anyone have any questions this evening?
President Leonard, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mayor Anderson, do you have anything this evening?
Hi. What am I put first on this? Oh, Halloween, okay. So we had our Halloween contest on the, was it 22nd? Somewhere around there. It was, yeah, the parade. It was wonderful. Thank you, everyone, for showing up, and of course, our borough staff for organizing. It was massive. We had so many people there. So it's great to see this event continuing to grow every year. And I just can't get over that little dog in the corn costume, one of my favorites. We also had the Conchi Stuff and the Hussey team do their yearly drive for food for CNC. So thank you to both Conchi Stuff and to everyone at the office of Hussey and his mortgage team for doing this every year. And the CNC does need donations throughout the year. So feel free to give a call down to Sandy or shoot me a message, and I'm happy to tell you what she needs. We also, as I save the date, the Christmas tree lighting, as always, will be the Friday after Thanksgiving. So it will be the 25th at 6:00 p.m. Food, pizza, hot chocolate, raffles. What's that?
Santa.
Santa, yes. So please come out. It cannot be as cold as last year, for sure. So we're due for a slightly warmer night. And thank you to the Conchuck and Ambucks for presenting this once again. And then, was that it for that? All right, the last thing I have is since half of East 12th Avenue is here tonight. I did want to say, I went through my first leaf collection this morning, and it was a wonderful process. I saw the borough announcement. I made sure everything was put on the curb, and the guys came today, and it looks awesome. So thank you to our public works team.
There are a lot of leaves out there too.
There really were, yeah.
Drub 11th? It's brutal. Okay. Anita, do you have anything this evening?
Yeah, again, thanks to all those that came out for the Halloween parade. It was great, and it was even more fun with having some of them show up at my house the next night. So that's all I have.
Nothing? Adrian?
Yes, there is an election on November 8th, so I encourage everyone to exercise your right to vote. So make it out and cast your vote.
Thank you. Karen?
I don't have anything other than, but we're also, of those.
Tina?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Chief Meds, do you have anything this evening? That I will adjourn the meeting. Oh, goodness gracious, every time I don't do it first. Public comment? Does anyone have public comment?
Question?
Sure.
I just want to drag this out so you guys miss. For the pocket park that's going up at the?
Masonic home?
What's it called?
Masonic home?
Masonic home. Is that what it's called? Yeah. So there's going to be public parking there, right? And I'm assuming there's not going to be? there, right? And I'm assuming there's not going to be charging stations there for electric vehicles?
Not currently. There's nothing in the agreement that would prohibit that, but as far as I know, there's no current plan for that.
Is there the ability to have, like, the infrastructure there in the future if you want to put them in conduit or whatever it is, kind of make it easier down the road?
We made sure the agreement is broad enough that, yes, you could do that.
Okay. So that's it. See? Go first.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Meeting adjourned.